Lord Mayor, the town clerk sends his apologies and if it please you, I appear in his absence. Before moving to consider the items on today's agenda, may I remind those present that this meeting is being recorded in accordance with the City Corporation's filming and recording protocol. Under item one, the names of those members who have presented apologies for today's meeting have been recorded. At item two, does any honourable member have any additional interest to declare in respect of the items to be considered? At item three, starting on page five, are the minutes of the last court. The question is that the minutes of the last court are correctly recorded. That is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried. At item four, the Right Honourable Lord Mayor to report on his recent engagements.
Thank you, Town Clerk. May I offer a special welcome to two students from Arizona who are in the public gallery today, part of the London Bridge Rotary Education Foundation. Lovely to have you here. It has been a busy month for the City of London Corporation since our last court, all the while enjoying the excitement of Wimbledon and now the Women's Euros. At the beginning of this month, we welcomed the Lord Chancellor and the Lady Chief Justice and many of His Majesty's judges to Mansion House, where we discussed the importance of the rule of law and the value of legal services and expertise as one of the United Kingdom's greatest exports. Two weeks ago, we had the honour of welcoming President Macron of France here to a state banquet in this very hall. We spoke of the importance and the strength of the alliance between France and the United Kingdom. I emphasised the historic contribution of the City of London to that alliance and the current contribution of the financial city to European investment in defence and other shared priorities. Last week, we held the Financial and Professional Services Dinner where the Chancellor of the Exchequer gave her Mansion House speech with commitments to further reforms to regulation, to savings and on how we welcome international investors. I highlighted the launch of the employers' pension pledge, a commitment to value for money for better returns for savers and for investment which will unleash growth across the United Kingdom. The pledge has now been signed by 23 of the United Kingdom's largest employers, covering more than a million individuals, and we will continue to urge more employers to take this much-needed step. This builds on the Mansion House Accord announced in May. I also highlighted the education pledge, a coming together of many prominent educational institutions to train those in the pension value chain on the importance of taking calculated risk when investing pension monies. They have agreed to provide this training at cost, a great commitment of them all. This week, I hosted a roundtable with the Defence Secretary, John Healy, and businesses on how the financial services sector can do more to support investment in UK defence. This brought together government finance and industry together in order to work out better ways to finance the UK defence supply chain. Later today, I'll be travelling to South Yorkshire, visiting the Homeless Homelessness Project of the Royal Foundation, being supported by the Lord Mayor's appeal, the Wentworth Woodhouse Restoration Project and also the Company of Cutlers in Hallamshire. I'd like to thank everyone here for your support in this busy and productive period for our city. Thank you.
Under item five, the Chairman of the Policy and Resources Committee.
My Lord Mayor, it's hard to believe that we are already reaching the first recess of this new electoral term. It's been great to see our newly elected members engaging positively, joining our longer-standing members to make important decisions for our constituents and for the city. And what a productive period it's been. Notably, and as referenced by the Lord Mayor, we've hosted Chancellor Rachel Reeves for the FPS Dinner, at which His Majesty's Government, amongst many announcements, announced the new Office for Investment, a unified national investment hub set to unlock £10 billion in foreign direct investment potential. It's a model that we, the corporation, recommended in our flagship Vision for Economic Growth Report and certainly one that I've been championing ever since. And I'm pleased to inform honourable members that we will be partnering with government and regulators on the hub's delivery. Alongside your work, my Lord Mayor, on pensions investment, this demonstrates our City Corporation's renewed status as the partner of choice for government and a critical player in the national growth strategy. Meanwhile, the City Corporation's open spaces have won global recognition, securing 15 green flags and 14 heritage awards for the quality of their biodiversity, cleanliness, conservation and visitor experience. Congratulations to all concerned. In June, we launched the Revealing the City's Past, a landmark project to reinterpret the statues of slave traders, former Lord Mayor William Beckford and former Sheriff of the City and MP Sir John Cass in particular. A demonstration of this Court's commitment to historical accountability. And it's right that I acknowledge the individuals who were instrumental in this project, not least they included Andrea Mayes, Catherine McGinnis, Emma Cunningham, Caroline Addy, Emily Garland, Doug Barrow, Monsieur Ali, as well as all members of the original Tackling Racism Task Force. We thank you all for your hard work and foresight on this initiative. I know, honourable members, that the rest of 2025 will be just as busy. We will have more difficult decisions to make and more policies and projects to deliver together for our workers, our residents, our visitors and indeed for our country. But for now, I wish every member a restful and an enjoyable recess. My Lord Mayor.
As members can see, there are no contested nominations on today's summons and so there is no need to conduct any ballots today. Accordingly, the Lord Mayor declares the members listed to be appointed as set out on the summons at paragraphs A to D. At item seven, on page 23, is a report of your Planning and Transportation Committee relating to the works at Leadenhall Street. Does any member wish to debate this item? That is then to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the report to be carried. At item eight, starting on page 35, is a report of your Policy and Resources Committee proposing an amendment to the Constitution of the Fraud and Cybercrime Reporting and Analysis Service Procurement Committee. Does any member wish to debate this item? In that case, that is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the report to be carried. At item nine, on page 39, is a report of your Finance Committee proposing an adoption of a new project procedure, the Chairman of the Finance Committee.
My Lord Mayor, members. Speed, value, flexibility, accountability, not normally qualities that we associate with the City Corporation, but that is what this paper is all about. And for those of you who have read it, it reads like a real detective thriller. We have a problem, a body in the library, in other words. If you look at paragraph one on page 39, inconsistent practices, slow decision-making and insufficient visibility. We have a need, look at paragraph two, for a simplified proportionate governance model which engages members at strategic points of decision-making. And we have a hero from Star Wars called P3 and some characters, two officers in particular, who I must pay tribute to, Janine Whitehorm and Nadia Ahmed, who've done a huge amount of work on this. We have a detective in the shape of forensic examination from our Projects and Procurement Subcommittee, which agreed these and recommended these proposals on the 16th of June. And it was witnessed by an ecstatic Finance Committee on the 1st of July, followed by a couple of other briefings, at which no major points were raised. And we have some simple solutions here. You look at page 40, six very sensible recommendations, we're making the thresholds much more sensible and appropriate. We've retained a check on the optimism bias, so that members are informed as to what is going on, and we have a start date in November 25. And we have a rather odd tier structure on page 44, where tier nought is the highest and tier four or tier three is the lowest. Not quite sure where the unsolved mystery has come from, but that's more to comment on that, I suspect. And we have a simplified gateway process set out on page 45. All in all, this does produce a much more simplified procedure on a framework which has been outstanding and not updated for many, many years. As I said, calling of projects is still possible, the tier rankings remain unsolved. I must thank officers for an enormous amount of work, but I think this will make it, this will transform our ability to manage and understand our project frameworks much, much better. And I recommend it to all members for their support. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Does any other member wish to speak on this report? Mr Murphy.
My Lord Mayor, thank you, and I completely endorse the comments of the Chairman of Finance. Could he give me his assurance? I know he just referenced the tiering system on page 85, which has been discussed at length at the Projects and Procurement Subcommittee. I understand that the reason why this is actually so complicated is because we follow the government model, which probably tells us all we need to know. But could I seek his assurance that actually within the corporation it would make perfect sense to have our highest risk items as the highest risk tier and our lowest, business as usual, as tier zero? I think that would make a lot of sense, but if we can give that clear direction to officers, that would be extremely useful. Other than that, I would just like to thank all of the service committees who have seen and commented on this paper and all the members who have attended the training sessions that we've been running over the last few weeks, who have fed back very usefully to form the final position here. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Murphy. Before I call on the Chairman to reply, is there any other member who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, in which case for the Chairman of Finance to reply and close the debate.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I totally endorse what Deputy Murphy said. We will be making that change and instructing officers accordingly under the framework. And I think by the time we hit November, we will have resolved the unsolved mystery of the tiering. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you. In that case, that is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the report to be carried. At item 10, the Right Honourable the Lord Mayor has been made aware of one motion relating to the change of a membership on a ward committee. The motion is submitted by Deputy Anne Holmes and is in the following terms, that Deputy Anne Holmes be appointed to the Finance Committee in the room of Brendan Barnes for the Ward of Farringdon within. The Chief Commoner.
I'm delighted to second the motion.
That then is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried. At item 11, on page 93, is the list of applicants for the freedom. The motion is that the several persons named be admitted to the freedom accordingly. That is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried. Moving to item 12, where the Right Honourable the Lord Mayor has received notice of three questions. Firstly, Deputy Nigat Kureshi to ask a question of the Chairman of the Policy and Resources Committee.
Good afternoon, my Lord Mayor. I hope you can all hear me because we're having sound difficulties towards the back here. The question I'd like to address to the Chair of Policy and Resources, in current geopolitics and our visible presence worldwide, which is very important and provides an advantage for the Square Mile to leverage from, and this is evident from the Lord Mayor's global visits. Please can the Chair of Policy and Resources provide an update whether the success of the US office has been achieved and the plans which have been delayed and the costs of the office? And will the US office be providing an annual statement to this Court, my Lord Mayor?
The Chairman of the Policy and Resources Committee.
My Lord Mayor, I thank the honourable member for giving me notice of her question. As the honourable member suggests, our overseas offices provide in-market intelligence, expertise and advocacy for the UK financial and professional services sector worldwide. Let me provide just two examples in addition to the one that she has specifically asked me about. Our India office, for example, has been critical to developing the UK infrastructure bridge with India, positioning the United Kingdom as a financial and professional services partner to India in sustainable, strategic, long-term infrastructure projects. In Brussels, our office focuses on policy and our relationship with the EU and wider Europe. Its work was crucial to the UK-Switzerland Mutual Recognition Agreement in financial services, which established a global precedent, unlocking new access through outcomes-based recognition. But turning to the United States, this, of course, is our largest global trading partner. And it really doesn't make sense that until we formally established a subsidiary of the City Corporation in the United States last year, that we had no office there. And we are learning as we build. Though initially focused on New York, we now believe that the City Corporation will be best served in Washington DC, with the Managing Director's role primarily regulatory and policy orientated. This does not mean that the Managing Director will not support the trade and promotional side of our work in the United States. It simply recognises that particularly in the light of the evolving geopolitical situation, the weight of the role will lean to Washington. We hope to appoint a new Managing Director in October, following a member-led recruitment process. And given how much remains to do and to build in the coming months, it would be premature to determine whether the US office has been a success. But I guarantee to the honourable member to continually update this Court as the Managing Directors are appointed and as we start to make what I believe will be successful progress. I'm certainly confident that we are on the right track. In terms of reporting the activities of our international offices, they are reported presently quarterly to your Policy and Resources Committee. The costs of the US office were zero in 2023-24, £296,000 in 2024-2025, and £450,000 in 2024-25, sorry, in 2025-26, which includes office space as well as salaries. My Lord Mayor.
Chairman, thank you. Deputy Kureshi, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. Thank you, Chair of Policy and Resources, for your very eloquent answer, which I have taken note of. And I actually do have a supplementary question. Is it appropriate that you may be able to engage with members of this Court that do have actually entrenched relations with the US and with US companies based in the Square Mile, that would actually want to be involved in this office and be aware of what we are doing in this, in this space? Thank you so much.
The Chairman of the Policy and Resources Committee.
My Lord Mayor, I thank the honourable member for her supplementary question. We are always keen to use the expertise and knowledge of every member of this Court that might want to engage in a particular geographic location where they have experience or connections. And so I welcome, I welcome the supplementary because it does allow me, not only to say that, but also to say that in principle I have absolutely no problem in the quarterly updates being circulated to this entire Court. There is nothing confidential about them or secretive about them, and I would, if it helps members to better understand the opportunities in all of these geographic locations and what we're doing to realise them for the benefit of the City of London, then I would happily do that as well. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr Lawrence.
My Lord Mayor, I welcome just what the Policy, Chairman of Policy has just said because the success is there in front of us, being the, our major partners trade-wise with the US. May I ask the Chairman, will we be entertaining the President Trump in September? My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Lawrence. The Chairman of the Policy and Resources Committee.
My Lord Mayor, I think I thank the honourable member for his supplementary question. Look, the truth is, and this is the truth, at this moment in time, I don't know. What I do know is the dates that have been published for the President's state visit to the United Kingdom. I do know that that is to be based around Windsor, Windsor Castle, where His Majesty the King intends to host the President. Further opportunities for engagement have not yet been decided upon, so I can't answer today, but I can assure honourable members that as soon as we are in a position to do so, if that is the, the direction of travel of the state visit, I will immediately inform all honourable members. And I'm sorry I can't give you a more detailed response at this moment in time. My Lord Mayor.
Chairman, thank you. Melissa Collett.
My Lord Mayor, in Billingsgate and elsewhere in the city, we have a growing tech sector that is continually seeking investment, especially from the US, where there are larger funds available. Can the Policy Chair explain how the city's US office will help tech, innovation and space sectors get much-needed access to US investors so they can grow and scale to their full potential, my Lord Mayor?
Thank you. The Chairman of the Policy and Resources Committee.
My Lord Mayor, I thank the honourable member for, for the question, and if I may be so bold as to congratulate her on her maiden speech in this Court this afternoon. The answer is, of course, that technology is an integral part of the financial and professional services sector offering, both here in the city and in the United States. So I would expect the Managing Director to provide that support and that resource to overseas investors, to US investors in the tech sector. I mean, it is a reality statistically that last year, technology was the fastest-growing sector in the City of London, ahead of, ahead of financial services for the first time in our history. So it's an incredibly important blossoming, burgeoning, growing sector, and I will give her my assurance that it will be one of those issues which we will ask the new Managing Director in the United States to focus in on. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Next, Deputy John Fletcher to ask a question of the Chair of the Community and Children's Services Committee.
My Lord Mayor, after the last meeting of this Honourable Court, a motion proposed by an older woman, hello? Well, I can't move, so they're going to have to get the microphone to work, aren't they? Thank you. Hello? Working? Yes. One, two, three. Ah, there we go. Right. My Lord Mayor, after the last meeting of this Honourable Court, a motion proposed by an older woman, Martha Grecos, may have inadvertently left the impression that nothing was currently being done to improve the unacceptable state of some of our social housing stock because required funding was not yet in place. Could the Chair please correct this impression and reassure members, constituents and especially our tenants, explaining how her committee is getting stuck into the problem now rather than sitting back waiting for full funding? My Lord Mayor.
Thank you. The Chair of the Community and Children's Services Committee.
My Lord Mayor? No. My Lord Mayor? Is it working yet? No. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. My Lord Mayor, I thank the honourable member for notice of his question. At the last Court of Common Council, there was significant debate on the funding of the 10-year programme of the Major Works Programme across all our housing estates. The cost estimate for that is £205 million. For some months, the Chamberlain's Department and the team in the Department of Community and Children's Services have been working incredibly hard to identify the funding required. But at the time of that debate, members would be made aware that while a significant proportion of the funds had been identified, there remained a shortfall of approximately £84 million in the housing investment programme. But for the avoidance of doubt, the Chair of Policy and Resources and myself, has it gone? No, it's, it's gone. Try again? Yep, thank you. Thank you very much. I'll just repeat that last statement. For the avoidance of doubt, myself and the Chair of Policy and Resources have been clear that we are committed to the delivery of this programme and will absolutely make sure that this happens. We receive regular updates on the funding options so we can see that swift progress has been made, and as a result, I am confident that this programme will be fully funded. I've said before in this Court that we recognise that tenants have not previously been well-served. Indeed, we can say the same for our leaseholders. Through this programme, we will need to fulfil our responsibility to them so that they can live in decent, warm and safe homes and restore the trust in the City of London as their landlord. I'm grateful for the ongoing dialogue with our resident associations and welcome their interest and involvement. Specifically for Golden Lane Estate, Gleara is a key partner in the recently established Transformation Group. Its first meeting is next week. This follows a similar model of resident involvement, supporting our development and works on the Middlesex Street Estate and on Sydenham Hill. As the delivery programme becomes evident... the challenge of delivering this ambitious programme. But to be clear, the commitment to this programme is real. Work has started. I'm confident that over the 10 years of the programme, it will be funded. And we expect to be able to share more detail of this by the end of this year. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. Deputy Fletcher, do you have a supplementary question?
No. No. No.
Sorry, Mr Fletcher, I misheard you. In which case, I have the following, members have indicated that they wish to speak, Susan Farrington, followed by Henry Colterst and then Jason Pritchard, and Mr Lawrence, which will give us four out of six. And Leila Ostavar. So Susan Farrington, please.
I think despite what we've heard here today, it's quite clear from what we have heard and seen over the last couple of days from residents, that the state of social housing is deplorable. So would the Chair of the Communities and Children's Services Committee accept that the residential reset is nothing more than a failed PR exercise and that what we really need is a clear, planned, fully-funded action plan?
Chairman.
Lord Mayor, thank you for the follow-up question. I think we've made quite clear in this court and in our committees that the condition of some of our social housing estates is very, very poor. Residents quite legitimately have made that clear to us. And I think we have listened, we have understood the deplorable state of those homes, and that is exactly why we have a £205 million programme, to secure improvements in, in those homes. I'm afraid I would not accept that the residential reset is a failed exercise. It is much broader than housing. It, it, the, the lead member, Jackie Webster, has been doing enormous amount of work beyond the housing sphere, as I've said, to involve residents much more broadly in the business of living in the city, as well as the specific work in this Court of Common Council. I think that we can see some very significant tangible benefits. I'm quite sure that the resident lead for the reset would be very happy at a future occasion at this court to make information to, available to all members about the progress that is being made. But in advance of that, I'm sure it would be possible to issue a briefing note on the scope and breadth of that work and where residents are seen to be much more directly involved in our business than they were before the reset began. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. The Chairman of the Finance Committee.
My Lord Mayor, is the Chairman aware exactly how much work is going on in the background of the Chamberlain's Department? Because it is huge. And that actually we are confident and intend to produce a fully-funded proposal certainly by the end of this year. Thank you, Chairman.
Chair.
Thank you. As I said, I'm very grateful to officers' work in the Chamberlain's Department and in Community Children's Services. I know how hard they have been working. They understand how committed members are to deliver this programme. They appreciate that this is an extensive programme. We absolutely have to deliver this. That commitment is there. And I'm very grateful to the Chairman of Finance to support that work and bringing further detailed information back to committees and to this court by the end of this year.
Thank you, Chair. Jason Pritchard.
Hello, my Lord Mayor. The Chair of the Community and Children's Services Committee supported the motion in 2022 to use the city estate funds to accelerate the renovation of our housing estate. She was not present when essentially the same motion was debated last month. So will the Chair clarify whether she still supports that principle and whether she will still vote the same way when the motion returns to this court next year, by which time no credible alternative funding source is likely to have emerged? My Lord Mayor.
Thank you. The Chair of the Community and Children's Services Committee.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. And thank you for the question. I think that as my time as Deputy Chair of Community and Children's Services and now as the Chair of Community and Children's Services, I am much more aware of the scale of the problem that we have to tackle. I am also, as a more experienced member, much more aware of the detail in which, the way in which the City of London finances operate. So I think that is the first thing I'd say. Unfortunately, I was not able to be here at the, the debate at the last court meeting. I'm sorry about that. I had other, other commitments. However, had I been here, I would have said and supported the amendment that all options should be considered. As I speak today, I know that all options are being considered. I know that there are a number of sources to fully fund this programme. They are all being explained. As, as the Chair of Finance has said, the outcome of that work will appear at a future meeting of this court, but before the end of this calendar year. I think what I would say in, in, to be avoiding any further doubt, I and the Chair of Policy and Resources and the Chair of Finance Committee are absolutely determined to secure the funding for this support, for this programme. My view at the moment is that all options are being explored, and I repeat that for the avoidance of doubt again. And we will see in due course, when further information is available to us, not least the settlement from the, the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government. When we see all of that together in the, in the round, we will be able to be, explain in full how this programme is being funded. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. Next, we have Greg Lawrence.
My Lord Mayor, I'm 100% support that this work must be done. But for clarity, Master Chairman, what percentage of our housing stock is privately owned?
Thank you. The Chair.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. Each estate has a slightly different number of tenants and leaseholders. But on, if you look at it as an average, it's just below, just below 50/50. So on some estates, it might be 46, 54. But as a rule of thumb, you can work on an average of about 50/50 or just below 50/50.
Thank you, Chair. Penultimately, we have Leila Ostavar.
My Lord Mayor, the resident associations for the corporations' housing estates in the city have told us that they do not accept assurances from the corporation that housing renovation is in hand and that they have no confidence it could be funded without tapping the city's estate. Will the Chair of the Community and Children's Services Committee listen to what they say? My Lord Mayor.
Thank you. The Chair.
Again, thank you for that question. I understand how residents need to see evidence of progress. That is absolutely, absolutely clear. I can repeat what I've said already. We are working with residents where we have major programmes of work, either in the planning or underway. Those residents are involved in, in that work. And the Golden Lane Residents' Association is a partner in the Transformation Group, as I said, begins work in next week. I can be quite explicit about the work on the Middlesex Street Estate as well. We have five residents of part of the steering group that for quite some time, maybe 18 months, possibly longer, have been working together with officers, with myself as Chair in that group, and have had very extensive opportunities to be part of the design and the detail of, of, of that programme. And the same on the Sydenham Hill Estate. I understand that people need to see physical work underway. But to assure people as far as I can, in respect of the Golden Lane Estate, extensive work is already underway. The 10-year programme has started. It started earlier this year. We are at a pre-procurement stage. The procurement will go out formally in the spring, and we expect that building works to be on-site in the early part of 2027. Of course, you need a detailed plan. And we have a plan that is in the broader sense in, in outline for when particular estates, particular blocks in the estates where we expect and anticipate the work to be undertaken. But it's when the contractors are in place that you can see the detail of the spacing and the staging of the works. These are very complicated, complex programmes of work. And you wouldn't expect officers in the corporation to set out the finest detail of those developments. You have to have the support of the developers on the ground, providing a lot more of the detail of that. They will all come in time. But please, I want to assure members again, work has started, it is underway. But I know that residents need to see the proof. I hope in the passage of time and certainly over the next 12 months, the residents will see through their involvement, we are absolutely serious about this. It will happen. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. And finally, as having reached our limit of six additional questioners, Gabby Roberts Shaw, please.
I've heard this microphone working, so I trust you can all hear me. Thank you for your question, John, and thank you, Helen, for your answers. Crescent House, which is the block in which I live in the City of London, has funding in place, part of the Golden Lane Estate. I have lived and breathed the projects that have been going on there for the last four years. I've attended 28 monthly residents liaison meetings. Believe me, there is resident liaison going on and well before the resident reset was in place. What is stymying us now is the changes in the Housing Act because of Grenfell. We had a tender that was about to be awarded, and that had to be pulled and redone because our low-rise block was connected to two high-rise blocks.
I'm sorry, this is becoming a speech. Could you please get to a question? Thank you.
And so we, we ended up with a three-year delay. Can the Chair please advise whether there's any way that the City of London can circumnavigate the Building Safety Executive and its chronic under-resourcing to ensure faster delivery? Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair.
My Lord Mayor, I wish it were so simple. I would love to be able to expedite the, the work that we have to do and the submission and the processing of the submission we, we, we make to the Building Regulator. What I can say is that we know where we have issues. We know that in electrical safety compliance, for example, that, that we have a substantial amount of work to do. We are talking with the housing inspector about that. We have a programme in place to, to move that as quickly as possible. And we have a high degree of confidence that we will deliver the, the electrical safety work by March 26. We also know that we had a difficulty in the reporting of the high-rise buildings. And my honourable colleague is quite right, that caused a delay. We had to go back and we had to re-submit, having been satisfied that we had completed the works as necessary. But we have no control over the Health and Safety Executive. We are in their hands. We have encouraged and pushed as far as we can. We looked for alternative routes to see if there was a way in which we could expedite that. But sadly, that is just not possible. So I'm sorry, and I agree, it's very unfortunate, but we have done all that we can to move that as quickly as we can.
Thank you, Chair. Moving on then, Deputy Madhush Gupta to ask a question of the Chairman of the City of London Police Authority Board.
My Lord Mayor, they've positioned these microphones today as though you're a giant. I'm clearly not. One of the cities, one of the City of London's most distinctive and valuable assets is its dedicated police force, a service that not only ensures the safety and security of those who live, work and visit our Square Mile, but also plays a national leadership role in the fight against fraud, economic crime and cybercrime. As members of this Honourable Court and through the work of the Police Authority Board, we bear an important responsibility to hold the City of London Police to account, to ensure its continued excellence in both local and national policing. Could my honourable friend, the Chair of the Police Authority Board, update this Honourable Court on the outcome of the recent peel inspection by His Majesty's Inspectorate? My Lord Mayor.
Thank you. The Chair of the Police Authority Board.
My Lord Mayor, I would like to thank the Honourable Member for giving me notice of his question. And I'm pleased to update this Honourable Court on the recent inspection report. Indeed, this is hot off the press because it was published just this morning. The 2025 results are amongst the strongest the city police has ever received, putting our police service amongst the top-performing forces in the country. It was graded outstanding for crime data integrity with special, specific recognition for its work with victims of rape and serious sexual assault, demonstrating an unwavering commitment to the ethical crime recording and victim care. The city police's positive outcome rate for violence against women and girls offences is now four times the national average. It also is encouraging that the city police has been graded good for both how it investigates crime and how it responds to the public, up from an adequate rating in 2023. This reflects clear leadership, service improvement and targeted investment. I am convinced that these results demonstrate the City of London Police is well on track to meet the priorities set out in our new policing plan published earlier this year, including becoming one of the most inclusive and trusted police services in the UK, improving victim services and outcomes, delivering national leadership on fraud, economic and cybercrime, and ultimately making the Square Mile safer for all who live, work, study and visit here. These achievements are a credit to the dedication of the entire policing team of officers and staff, the leadership of Commissioner Peter Docti and his wider leadership team. That being said, the work does not end here. The Police Authority Board will continue to support and scrutinise the city police to ensure continued progress, and I am committed to driving further improvements in city policing. But for now, my congratulations to the Commissioner and all the members of the City of London Police family. This inspection truly reflects meaningful improvements and a strong foundation for future success. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. Deputy Gupta, do you have a supplementary question?
I do not. Thank you.
Gosh, this is tall. Thank you. Thank you, my Lord Mayor. And can I thank the Chairman for his very comprehensive response there and congratulate the City London Police and the Commissioner for the hard work that they're carrying out and continue to carry out. Now, I've been a long supporter of the city police across their work with violence against women and girls, suicide prevention, licensing. However, as much as we can congratulate ourselves, we have seen a rise in graffiti and violence crimes across the city. This morning, another of my businesses had their window smashed. This is the second time in about 12 months. And along the Minneries and All Gates, there's been a number of smashed windows, attempted break-ins or viol- or violence, I'm not sure. But in the east side of the city, we're not as well covered with CCTV as you are in the centre of the, of the city. And therefore, what assurances can you give the businesses and the residents in my ward in particular, that the police are actually being very proactive? We're not that visible these days. I realise resources are stretched, but being visible does provide assurances. And finally, telephone snatches, again, in my area between Tower Hill and Tower Gateway are on the increase. My daughter herself had an attempted snatch, and she phoned the police, 111, and unfortunately, nobody answered on several attempts. So whilst we're doing great work, I do think we need to be aware of areas that we can improve. And therefore, given that you're going to drive assurance for further improvement, can you perhaps share with me now how you think you can do so, especially in my ward and the fringe areas of the city? Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you. The Chair of the Police Authority.
I thank the Honourable Member for her question and indeed her commitment.
I thank the Honourable Member for her question and indeed her commitment on many issues. And I have worked with her particularly around homelessness in the past, which is of course a key area that is about partnership working. And I think my answer to her question is twofold. One is about partnership working. And the City Police and the City of London Corporation Community Safety Team are working far more closely together than they have been in the past to address some of the particular issues around antisocial behaviour. However, I will take back her feedback on what is happening in her ward and speak to the relevant ward, dedicated ward team to see what else can be done in that respect. And I think that is where we are now. We are focusing on community safety, on having dedicated ward officers that local communities, residents and businesses can engage with. And I was the other day in my own ward, where I just, which is in the centre, I get that, where I was speaking to businesses and the shoplifting issues that all businesses across London have. And they said, all the people I spoke to, they said, the City Police responds and takes it serious. That is not the case elsewhere in the country. The same with phone snatching. It is a pandemic, it is on the rise. But we are taking action together, indeed with our colleagues from the Planning and Transportation around cyclists and so on. And the cycle team that we have re-established under encouragement from the Police Authority Board is now giving advice to other forces across the country for the proactive approach that we are taking and the success rate that we are having with catching phone snatchers. So I do agree with the Honourable Member that more needs to be done. If there are those specific issues, apologies, that members have, please raise it with me. But rest assured that the response rate in the city is one of the highest in the whole country, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. Moving on then to item 13 on page 99, which is a report of your Audit and Risk Management Committee presenting that committee's annual report. Does any member wish to debate the item? If not, that is to receive. Turning to page 105 at item 14, this is a report of mine in my capacity as monitoring officer, reporting on an ombudsman's inquiry. And I am presenting it to you as required, my Lord. That is to receive after Mr Tunbridge has spoken.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor, and I hope this microphone's working. And it's very fortuitous that your acting town clerk today, as he's just mentioned, wrote this report because he may be able to answer my question. My Lord Mayor, this is a very serious report. It's a very concerning report. And it's a very interesting conclusion on page 108, starting at paragraph 25. We have identified weaknesses. So my question, my Lord Mayor, as we outsource this service to another London borough, why is it we are not reviewing whether that London borough is still the right provider of the service? Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Tunbridge. The Chairman of the Finance Committee, as this is the Finance, is the Service Committee for this area. Thank you.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. I've been given this one. I will be happy to provide an answer in writing at the end of this meeting. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. That then is to receive. At item 15 on page 111 is a report on measures introduced into Parliament which might have an effect on the city corporation. This then is to receive. At item 16, there were no ballots taken at the last court, so no results are there to report on. At item 17, there are no resolutions. At item 18, there is no report. And at item 19, there are no dockets for the hospital seal. We turn then to item 20 and to the motion to exclude the public. The Right Honourable, the Lord Mayor, has been informed of several matters for consideration after the public have withdrawn from the meeting. And the Chief Commissar has placed a motion on the summons to exclude the public whilst the items are considered. Is the motion seconded? The Chairman of the Finance Committee.
My Lord Mayor, I second the motion, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. That then is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried. Will members of the public and officers in the public gallery kindly now withdraw? And could the live stream please be ended?